Alrighty. Okay, I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Ms. Carrera, roll call please.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to excuse me, is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council Number Fifty, Two Thousand Twenty-One, amending Section Seven Oh Nine G of the City of Scranton zoning ordinance prohibiting signs or displays that include words or images that are obscene, pornographic, or that an average reasonable person would find highly offensive to public decency.
At this time, would someone please make a motion to accept public comment?
So.
Second.
There's been a motion, second, to accept public comment related to the ordinance. Mrs. Reed, would you please read any comments received into the record?
Thank you, Councilman Vaughn. There were no public comments submitted for file of the Council Number Fifty, Two Thousand Twenty-One.
Thank you. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so move. Tom, I think there's feedback from your, when you're, microphone. Yep, there you go, for some reason. I don't know why. Um, okay, if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This public hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now we can start with our caucus for tonight, so I want to welcome everyone. Today's Tuesday, March Second, Two Thousand and Twenty-One. This is our Scranton City Council Caucus. Our regular meeting starts at six thirty. Um, hope everybody is doing well. So we'll start the caucus off tonight like we usually do, just going through the, uh, pieces of legislation. We'll just go one by one. So there's, uh, four pieces in fifth order. Uh, five B and five C have to do with parking restrictions, no parking zones, uh, both. Actually, one is on, actually, both are on, uh, Wyoming Avenue. Uh, pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about five B or five C? Anything they'd like to discuss?
The only thing I'm, uh, just reviewing is we passed an ordinance last year regarding the opposite side of that road. So just to make sure that there's no conflicting things, uh, in there. But besides that, I have nothing else.
Okay, very good. Uh, five D is, um, a piece that we sent down by OECD, and that is just to adopt the their citizens' participation plan. They do this every few years. This is just updating, and it's a a requirement from the, uh, from HUD. So does anybody have any questions or concerns about five D? Okay, uh, five E is the appointment of Leonard Nometka, uh, to the position of Chief of Police. Um, this one, there have been questions about, um, we've actually raised questions about this for the last few weeks, and, uh, have not received any answers. So tonight, I'll, I'll once again ask that we send correspondence to the mayor, uh, and her administration. Uh, really just, just asking two things, um, and Kevin had sent us language from the Administrative Code stating that, uh, the mayor has the ability to appoint acting department directors, but not to exceed thirty-five days. So Mr. Nometka was appointed as, uh, they use the term interim police chief effective September twelfth, Two Thousand Twenty, so it was over five months ago. In the Administrative Code, it states that after thirty-five days that the person must be either approved as permanent or dismissed, and no acting director can be reappointed to that classification for a period of six months. Is that correct, uh, Kevin?
That's correct.
So the, um, I, I guess I just want to make sure that we're doing everything, uh, by the book here in terms of approving this, this appointment. So, um, I would like to know, um, you know, first of all, the term interim, and I know Kevin had brought this up before, it's not defined or used, uh, in the, the city code. So I think we need to make sure that we're, we're staying in line with, with that section of the Administrative Code. So if we pass this, are we, are we violating the Administrative Code? Because the way I'm reading it, it seems like, uh, you know, this is in direct violation. Um, Kevin, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I, I don't, um, I don't understand the designation of interim director. I assume that it's synonymous with acting because essentially it's serving in the same, uh, serving the same function. In other words, you don't have the full appointment. You are serving in this position while a permanent, um, appointee is identified. So my initial reaction is that interim means acting and that this section six dash six seven is invoked with the Administrative Code. Obviously, the sit, the administration knew what they were doing here, so I think we just need an explanation as to how this doesn't, this appointment doesn't violate that section of the Administrative Code. Now, as you said, we've been trying to get clarification on that for for several weeks now. And hopefully we'll get that before, uh, the councilists give final consideration to this resolution.
Okay, uh, so I'm in favor of introducing this tonight, and then we'll, uh, Kevin and Lori, if you can just draft something with that, to that effect with the language in there to the mayor. I've spoken to her about it before, and I know Kevin has, has reached out, but we have not gotten any clarification. So, um, you know, I, I, I'm not going to vote for this next week if we don't have a, a determination on, on, uh, on that language. So does anyone else, uh, else have anything to add there?
It's unfortunate. I mean, I, I'm, I'm all in favor of Chief Nometka, but I'm always in favor of process. So thirty-five days, I know it, it was made mention that that's not enough time. Well, but it was longer than thirty-five days. It's five months. So I, I, I'm with the rest of you guys. Give us, give us some reason or rationale as to why, you know, we're not getting answers regarding the code. But let's move forward and, and make Chief Nometka, uh, the chief. He, you know, he's doing a great job. I'm glad that he's being chosen. I'm glad it's someone from in-house. It should be, obviously. But, um, this is, has nothing to do with Chief Nometka. I mean, this has to do with process, and let's just fix this. And get some answers.
Yep, I agree. Anybody else on that?
Okay.
I agree.
All right, that rounds out, uh, fifth order, or, yeah, fifth order business, sixth order, there's nothing, and seventh order, there's, um, a few pieces that we're going to, uh, vote on final passage, one of them being seven B, the, um, the hiring port and offer the delinquent municipal, um, where the delinquent refuse, uh, collection. Um, so we did get answers on that. I don't really have any comments on any of those. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add on the seventh order pieces?
Um, I, I was happy that the language that we, uh, or the ideas that we, uh, put out there for this, uh, for this contract got added to the contract. But since then, there, there hasn't been any discussion with the administration about the amnesty period.
Well, I did, I did discuss it with the mayor, and, you know, she's not in favor of it, and they're not in agreement with it. So, I mean, you know, I, I think it's a good idea. I think, like I said last week, I think we're leaving a lot of money out on the table there, but, um, ultimately, you know, they would need to be in favor of that for the program to, to be successful.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't add that in there. Um, you know, when we're looking at this and we're looking at this, um, this group that's going to collect, it's going to be fifteen percent. If we had that, that period of time where citizens could come in, the city would see a hundred percent of that money minus those fees. So, I mean, you know, the same thing. I, I think we could add an influx of money to the city coffers without the fees on top of it, but if they're not in agreement, I mean, other than mentioning it, I guess that's all we could do at this point.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Anything else? All right, so that rounds out the agenda. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I'll mention this during the regular meeting as well. So the, the Two Thousand Nineteen audit is, uh, finally complete, and that's going to be in third order on our agenda. We'll also, Lori, uh, through our office is going to receive hard copies, so if anybody wants a hard copy, uh, they can pick theirs up. Um, the second meeting regarding the issues on Third Avenue is happening on March Fourth. Uh, so we'll see how that goes. Um, we had the first meeting of the, uh, the Biden Committee that took place yesterday, March First. Um, thought it went very well. Uh, we're, uh, Don King is going to be looking to acquire some additional information on, uh, the impact on, on businesses and homeowners, and, um, you know, what the financial impact might be. So we're looking at a couple of different things, but overall, uh, I thought it went very well. So we'll have a, an official report, uh, next week, but that's, uh, generally, um, what happened there. So that was very good. Um, and then I did ask at the, uh, I did ask Lori to check in with the business administrator regarding the, uh, we've been told that the city has a surplus, uh, at the end of Two Thousand Twenty. Uh, so I had asked what that number was, uh, what the, what the amount was. Um, they could not provide an approximate number at this time. Because he stated that they still have expenditure, they have sixty day, allowed sixty days to utilize the Two Thousand Twenty funding to pay expenditures. So I'm just looking for a ballpark at least, uh, because they did state publicly that we had a surplus. So I'd just like to know what that is. Um, that's all I have. Uh, Lori, do you have anything?
Um, I have nothing related to, well, not necessarily to the agenda items, however, um, we had our required public hearing for the zoning amendment, which was filed of the Council Number Fifty. Um, and then there will be a motion to place this piece into sixth order this evening for its second, um, reading. Um, anytime you're making an amendment uh, to the ordering, excuse me, the zoning ordinance, um, there's quite a set of rules that we needed to follow. So this piece, it was introduced back on January twenty-sixth, and then there was a motion to table, uh, for thirty days. We were required to submit to the city and county planning commissions, um, for their review and their comment. Uh, last week on the agenda, the February twenty-third agenda, item three E was the correspondence that we received from the Lackawanna County Planning Commission, which approved this piece. Um, so this evening, then we, of course, we had the required public hearing. There were no comments received. Um, and then prior to, um, next week's meeting, there will be, there's another, um, uh, legal notice, uh, it's a notice of intent to adopt that will be in the, in the paper, and then I think we've, um, performed all necessary functions related to this amendment. Um, and that was, that was about it. I don't know if you wanted me to go into, um, upcoming caucuses, and you can tell me when, when's the right time for that.
Yeah, that, yeah, that would be, that would be great. Yeah, let's go.
Okay, so, um, so tonight, of course, was our, our public hearing. Um, and then next week, we have a caucus uh, with Scranton tomorrow. This will be March ninth. And then we were also contacted by the OECD Executive Director. Um, she wishes to come with the MKSD team. They'll be doing the feasibility study for the, um, Naog Pool, and, uh, they're going to join the fourth order portion of your meeting to explain the study and the survey and to share information about what they'll be doing. So that's next week. Um, the following week on the sixteenth, um, a representative from the Pennsylvania American Water Company will join your caucus to discuss upcoming water projects as we have always done in the past. Um, and then, uh, March thirtieth will be the follow-up to the Naog Pool feasibility study. Uh, MKSD will present, um, the draft study at that point. And that's all I have.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Uh, Kevin, do you have anything?
Uh, just to report that we, I participated in the first, um, meeting with the mayor, her solicitor, and, um, I know Councilman Donahue was there as well, uh, regarding Elm Street and, and coming, coming up the solution. It really should be called, uh, the, the Third Avenue Issue. Uh, that, you know, to address the issues that the folks on that street are having. Um, we have another meeting coming up this week, and, you know, we'll keep pushing for a, a, a short-term solution. So, and I know that, that all council wants this issue addressed as soon as possible. Um, we, Bill, as you said, we had a meeting yesterday regarding, um, the recognition of President Biden through the, through a street naming. The council will have in its mailbox tonight, um, the unapproved minutes from that meeting. Um, that's basically it, other than to, to say I really, um, I, I, I want to give, uh, my well wishes and good luck, uh, to Dr. Rothschild, who I know is, is on the the precipice of having, of being a mother, and, uh, I know how exciting it is. I can't believe it's twelve and a half years since we had our first baby, but it's, uh, truly is a game changer. So I just want to extend my good wishes to her, and I know everything will go fine.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, today's my due date, so I'm going to be over two, it looks like.
Same here. Came quick, didn't it? Seems like, yeah, it, it really did come fast. But yeah, we all wish you very well, uh, Dr. Rothschild, and, uh, exciting times, and keep us, keep us updated, because we're all going to be very anxious to, um, to, to hear the good news.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, um, we'll open it up now. I don't have anything else. We'll go left to right in the, the council Hollywood squares here. Councilman McAndrew, do you have anything?
Uh, nope, not at this time.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue?
Uh, the only thing else I have to update on is, uh, I reached out to the representative from PA American Water yesterday about Bird Street, because at the end of February was supposed to be when Bird Street would be open to traffic. Um, and she responded that the, you know, due to the snowy February, that that's been pushed back now to March fifteenth uh, to open Bird Street, but that full restoration is still on schedule by the end of April. So at least that's still on schedule. But I just wanted to give you an update there.
Okay, great, perfect. Um, you know what, as, we did get a, we'll talk about this when we get the public comment, but we did get, um, one question, Kyle, from Deb, Deborah New, I hope I'm pronouncing her last name right, Deborah New, Newhouse. Um, she wanted to know if the city made a profit, broke even, or, or, uh, do they lose money with their recycling, and is anybody enforcing the recycling ordinances and/or its fines? Lori, we didn't, uh, did we, because I don't know off the top of my head, but the answer to number one, but did we forward that to anyone yet?
Uh, no, once, once it's typically, the procedure I follow is once it is read into the record, then I'll submit the questions.
Okay, and then the second one from Clifford Smith. Um, that's a public safety issue, so, yeah, we'll forward that over to, uh, um, over to the police department. Okay, perfect. Uh, Councilman Schuster, anything?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. All right, uh, we have about twenty-five minutes until the regular meeting, so we'll take a recess here since there's nothing else to discuss. Um, and we'll see everybody at six thirty. Thanks, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting to order, Scranton City Council, March Second, Two Thousand Twenty-One. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away recently in our community. And let us also take a moment of silence for all of the people in our community, in our country, and around the world who have passed away and are suffering from the coronavirus. The pandemic has, as we know, turned our world upside down, but we must remain hopeful and strong. We continue to pray for the doctors, nurses, and researchers, and all the medical professionals who seek to heal and help those affected, and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they have protection and peace. Whether we are home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness, or only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together, and in place of our anxiety, let us have hope and peace. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here, thank you.
I'd like to take, I would like to make a motion and take from the table file of Council Number Fifty, Two Thousand Twenty-One.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table file of the Council Number Fifty, Two Thousand Twenty-One, and place it in sixth order for its second of three readings. This ordinance pertains to an amendment of a section of the zoning ordinance that was previously tabled to allow for a thirty-day review and comment period by the city and county planning commissions. This piece of legislation is expected to be in position for a final vote on next week's agenda, March ninth, Two Thousand and Twenty-One. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it and so move. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Thank you. Third order. Three A, Letter of Support for the American Rescue Plan, dated February twenty, Two Thousand Twenty-One, sent on behalf of Scranton Mayor Paige G. Cognetti and Scranton City Council. Three B, Agenda for the Continuation of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Monthly Meeting of February Seventeen, Two Thousand Twenty-One, held on February twenty-sixth, Two Thousand Twenty-One.
Thank you. Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I got two of them. Um, for the remainder of Lent, St. Anne's Basilica Council will be hosting a fish fry up the street here at St. Anne's Basilica for the Knights of Columbus. It's a fundraiser. Um, the fish fry is eight dollars. It includes Alaskan beer battered cod, french fries, tartar sauce, and a drink. And it's takeout only. Uh, it's going to be March twelfth and the twenty-sixth from five to eight. Uh, you can place your orders on the Knights of Columbus, uh, website. And I think you can also call the Basilica. And then secondly, uh, our friends, the Friends of the Poor, family to family, and the Weinberger, I'm sorry, the Weinberg Food Bank will have a pop-up, uh, COVID-nineteen emergency drive-through pantry tomorrow from one to three, four hundred family max, uh, and it's at Scranton High. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I would just like to wish a happy retirement to, um, Christine and Marie Gallagher, Leslie Isaac, uh, Perry Brunori and Jack Liptide from the Lips Department. Um, thanks for the service to the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to wish everyone, um, Happy Women's History Month, uh, which got started yesterday, and, um, the other thing, I know they were in last week, Neighbor Works, um, but I just wanted to remind everyone that the, the applications are open for the Beautiful Blocks Program. So, um, you can find out more through, uh, Neighbor Works, Northeastern Pennsylvania. And, uh, you can get in a pre-application, uh, if you're considering being a part of the program.
Thank you. Um, I just want to take a second. Uh, Councilman Schuster, uh, mentioned the employees who are retiring. I also want to take a second to, uh, recognize these, these employees. Um, there's quite a few of them. So, um, one that kind of slipped by was, um, I think slipped by us last year was Nelson Anker, uh, Ankerani, Ankerani, um, juvenile officer for the police department. He was hired October thirteenth, nineteen seventy. He retired in December of last year. Fifty years of service, uh, to the city of Scranton. So I want to wish, uh, Officer Ankerani, uh, a, a good and, and healthy retirement. That's, you just don't see, uh, that anymore. Fifty years of, of working for, um, and in fifty years towards public service. So that's just, it's, it's phenomenal. Uh, Christine Gallagher, hired, who I know personally, hired June twenty-second, nineteen ninety-eight. Um, I want to thank Christine for her service to the city. She did a wonderful, wonderful job. Same with Marie Gallagher, who I also know hired, uh, March eleventh, nineteen ninety-six. Um, so thank you, Marie, for all of your dedication and your hard work. I, I did not know Leslie Isaac, but you only hear, uh, great things about Leslie. She's been a staple down at the DPW, uh, forever. Um, and, and they're going to miss her, I know that. Hired August twenty-ninth, nineteen eighty-eight. So thanks for your, uh, your dedication, your work, Leslie. Uh, friend of mine, Jack Liptide, uh, hired September twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-six. Uh, Jack has been an asset to the city, uh, dedicated employee, and, uh, and a friend of mine. So thanks, Jack, for all that you've done. And Perry Brunori, uh, was hired March eleventh, nineteen ninety-six. Uh, Perry has been a friend, I think, of, of all of us. Well, Kyle and I, uh, especially because, um, just from being in, in chambers for, for the longest, and, and when the pandemic hit, unfortunately, we don't see Perry as much as we'd like. But Perry is the, uh, the maintenance man, one of the maintenance men down in City Hall, and I got to know Perry pretty well over the last seven years on council. And you couldn't find a nicer, uh, more dedicated, uh, employee in that building than Perry. Um, always greedy with a smile, conversation, big Yankees fan, and, uh, he was just a really, really great guy. Uh, so I wish him the best retirement, because he, he definitely deserves it. Um, there may be more retirements to come, and, uh, I would like to honor these, these employees who, who are, uh, taking their retirement, because without these people, the city doesn't run. The building doesn't run. We're losing a lot of good people, uh, uh, with a lot of experience, and it's, I think it's going to be very hard to replace, um, uh, these people with all the years that they've put in and the knowledge that they have. Um, but I, again, I want to thank them for their dedication to the city and all that they've given. Uh, a lot of these employees are often overlooked, um, in the clerical union and such, but they really, you know, they're often the people that you don't hear about, but they're the people that get the job done. So again, I want to thank them, uh, so much and wish them the best of luck. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. Fourth order, citizens' participation.
This time, would someone please make a motion to accept public comment from the following individuals, Deborah New, Newhouse and Clifford Smith.
Make a motion to accept public comment?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to accept public comment. Mrs. Reed, would you please read the comments into the record?
Thank you. The first submission is from Deborah Nihus as follows. Greetings. Quick questions. Number one, overall, does the city make a profit, break even, or lose money with its recycling? Number two, is anybody enforcing the recycling ordinances and/or its fines? The second submission is from Clifford Smith as follows. Hello, my name is Clifford Smith. I am a resident of North Scranton and homeowner. I would like to add a topic for the city council to put into the public. This topic is that of individuals who have relocated here due to the pandemic and have very loud car mufflers and play super loud music with their windows down. Even if these residents are now permit, permit citizens, we need to address the problem of the noise level in our neighborhoods due to these issues. The car mufflers are way too loud, and the music levels are as well when the weather is nice enough for them to roll down windows. The biggest concern is the use of these loud car mufflers. Can you please advise me on how to proceed with these issues with our council? And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on the question?
Uh, on the question, um, just regarding the recycling, I mean, those are good questions. I know we've asked those in the past, I believe, but it would be good to get some updated information on that, um, considering that we're paying for recycling uh, now where we weren't, I think, when we had asked those in the past. And, uh, on the noise, um, I know there is an ordinance on the books, uh, regarding decibel levels, but I believe the issue with that is to properly enforce it. The police department would need, uh, some sort of decibel reader. Um, and I don't think they have that equipment, or I don't believe they have that equipment. So that's something that I think we need to work on in terms of a grant, um, to get that, because I know that is a complaint all over the city.
Very good. Anyone else on the question? Uh, so we'll get the So we'll get these questions to the appropriate departments in the city. And we'll reach back out to Ms. Nuhus. So sorry if I mispronounced her name. And Mr. Smith. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Fifth order, five A, motions.
Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
No, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments?
I do. Back in January, I think it was our January ninth meeting, I brought forth some concerns from residents on Rundle Street and Watson Street. And these concerns are related to the Affordable Luxury Auto on twelve eighteen South Main Avenue, which are not contained to a lot. These automobiles are everywhere. Like we said, they're parking everywhere. And then the next block down on thirteen fifty South Main, there's a garage with no name on it. This, they also operate. So I know that Mrs. Reed sent correspondence on the twenty-first and the copy chief Nemecha, and as a request to follow up by parking enforcement personnel. So I believe the police went down and maybe ticketed vehicles. But it's, to me, and I understand that we had a couple of snowstorms since then, but I drove by there the other day, and there's still a ridiculous amount of cars on the car lot. And in front of this garage, on the side of the garage, and on the back of the garage. So between then and now, a resident who initially brought this to me actually messaged me, and it's pretty scary. So I'm going to read the message she sent to me. Hi, Mark, I don't know if anything more is being done on our situation. Just want to let you know that the situation is escalating. My brother Jim had another confrontation with them. It almost came to an assault from a guy who had Tennessee plates. The threat of gunfire was thrown in by one of the car lot men. The owner stated they stated that they always did this in New York and never had a problem. So, well, this isn't New York, all right? And it's just getting terribly bad. I'm really getting afraid living here now and very afraid that Jim can get hurt or killed. This is her husband. They had cars all over blocking the alley. And this alley is between Rundle and Reynolds and right next to this garage, all right? So, and it's a busy part of Main Avenue near Walmart. It's crazy where all the lanes change, right around there in Arcaro's Pizza. So many times they try to pull up this alley and it's blocked. And the people at the garage say, hey, back up. And, you know, you can't back up into the middle of Main Avenue. You know, someone's going to get hurt. This is a, this is a very serious safety issue. What I would like, Mrs. Reed, can you please reach out? I mean, first of all, there has to be something with zoning here. I drive by, it doesn't make any sense. You got, I can't even explain the amount of cars. Nobody's selling cars down there. No one's working on cars, but they're all over the place. If, Mrs. Reed, if you could please reach out and get an update on this situation because it's escalating. You know, I don't know all the enforcement policies. I don't know the code, but it doesn't look right. If it doesn't look right, it's probably not right. So if, Mrs. Reed, you could please circle around and contact, again, the police, the Lips Department, see what they've done, if anything. And please have them get back to us with regards to this.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Councilman McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Yes, I had two things I wanted to mention that I forgot about earlier. First, I just, I don't think we've talked about the Scranton Porch Fest that's being planned for later this month. Connor O'Brien from the Fringe Festival, he has put this together as an idea instead of the St. Patrick's Day parade that we're unable to have this year because of the pandemic. Instead, residents and businesses are being encouraged to decorate their properties with, you know, as if it was like a float in the parade. So I just wanted to give a mention to that. I believe it's going to be happening. I forget the date here. Around March twentieth, and I think that the decorations would stay up till March twenty-eighth. So if anyone's interested in being involved, even if you're a business, I know there's several businesses that have already signed up to be a part of it, then you could visit ScrantonPorchFest.com. And the other thing that I wanted to mention, I know that with the storms last night, we, the storm last night, we had a lot of high winds and, you know, a lot of downed trees and branches. And I just wanted to thank DPW for their quick cleanup. I saw them this morning on my street because a neighbor of ours had a very large branch fall down. And we were wondering, you know, how long it would stay there and not, not very long. Because sure enough, they came by very quickly. So I know they were hard at work around the city to help clean up after the storm. So those were the only things I want to mention, but thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
Just a couple of quick things. First, Ms. Reed, we haven't received a response on my request from the Licensing and Inspections Department on twenty-two oh eight Prospect, correct?
I don't believe so. Councilman Donahue, I'll follow up.
Would we be able to follow up with that? Will we also be able to just copy the mayor's office on that, too?
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we had a meeting regarding the issues on Third Avenue with the truck traffic last week. We're trying to work through some alternatives there. We're going to have a follow-up meeting this week. I know we've been in touch with State Representative Marty Flynn, Senator Blake's office regarding reaching out to PennDOT to try to see if there's any possibility to either accelerating the construction timeline for the Elm Street Bridge, which would alleviate those issues. Or of, you know, we even threw out there, if there's any way we could reinforce it to allow some weight, you know, half loads, et cetera. But we are working on that. I did reach out to American Water regarding Bird Street because in the beginning of December, we had sat down with them, and they gave us a timeline of the end of February for Bird Street to be open to traffic. It still is not open due to the snow in February. That deadline's now been pushed back to March fifteenth to open up Bird Street. But they still are on target for a full restoration by the end of April. And we also had our Biden Committee, Street Naming Committee, meeting yesterday. We're just in the fact-finding phase right now, I would say. So as we continue to just gain some information on the process and the impact, we'll keep everybody updated. That's all I have this week.
Great. Thank you. I just had two things, so actually three things. I received an email from a gentleman on Ferdinand Street, at the very top of Ferdinand Street, about some pretty dangerous conditions up there. So we forwarded that along to the DPW for them to take action. As I mentioned in the caucus, the two thousand nineteen audit is finally complete. It'll be on our agenda next week for those in the public who wanted to take a look at it and review it. And we also have hard copies that'll be available to us if anyone on council is interested. I have asked in the past for an update on the status of several recommendations that were made in our recovery plan with our recovery coordinator of the Pennsylvania Economy League. The Business Administrator gave another report that we should receive a complete update on all of those very soon. He had expressed to our city clerk that he went through each one of those with the Pennsylvania Economy League. So we'll get that soon. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Five B, for introduction and ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the easterly side of Wyoming Avenue from segment zero 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 zero, offset twelve ninety-two, to segment zero zero two zero, offset fourteen seventeen, to allow for safe sight distances for a parking lot proposed by Miller Loss located at six twenty Wyoming Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, the only concern I might have with this is just we approved the same sort of thing on the other side of the street. So I just, I was, Mrs. Reed was able to pull the previous legislation we approved for me this afternoon. So I just want to be able to compare those, just to get an idea of how that affects that six-hundred block.
Okay, very good. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five C for introduction, an ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the westerly side of the eight-hundred block of Wyoming Avenue from New Street South to West Gibson Street, and placement of the following signs. Four R eight dash three no parking symbol signs, twelve by twelve. Three R dash three zero one no parking arrow plaque, and one R dash three zero one no parking left arrow plaque.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just realized this when, during our little break, but we're going to have to amend this before final passage to say East Gibson Street instead of West Gibson Street. It might just be a typo, but West Gibson Street's over on West Side.
Good catch, Kyle. Thank you.
I was thinking the same thing.
I caught it when I went to compare the previous one with the one that Ms. Reed sent this afternoon during our break and realized that so.
Very good. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five D for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to adopt the citizens' participation plan for the Office of Economic and Community Development.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Five E for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Leonard Nemecha, eleven thirty Philo Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one eight five oh eight, to the position of Superintendent of Police for the city of Scranton, effective February seventeen, two thousand twenty-one.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, like I stated in caucus, I'm thrilled that he's been, Mr., or Chief Nemecha is being chosen as the police chief. I'm just sad to say that it, you know, it took not only thirty-five days, the poor guy had to wait, it's five months. So I know that we're still waiting to receive rationale or answers to why it took that long and possibly in the process violating an ordinance. So like I said, I'm thrilled that he got it. And he's doing a great job already, and I look forward to voting for him again next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Yeah, I agree with Councilman McAndrew there. We've been asking about this now, at least going back to January, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. We did have our solicitor, Attorney Hayes, look into whether or not this violated the administrative code. The language, I think, to all of us is pretty clear. It says that the mayor's obviously allowed to appoint an acting department directors for a period not to exceed thirty-five days. After the thirty-five days is up, the person must either be approved as permanent or dismissed. This appointment of Mr. Nemecha as interim police chief was effective September twelfth, two thousand twenty. So that's over five months ago. The administrative code goes on to say that no acting director can be reappointed to that classification for a period of six months. So I think before we put our stamp of approval on this, we have to make sure that the rules are being followed and that by approving this, we're not making a mistake and violating, continuing to violate the administrative code. So Kevin, and Lori, if you can draft something up and we'll sign it and send it over to them as soon as possible so we can get a response before final passage next week. Anyone else have anything to add there? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Sixth order, six A, previously tabled, reading by title filed at council number fifty, two thousand twenty-one, and ordinance amending section seven oh nine G of the city of Scranton zoning ordinance prohibiting signs or displays that include words or images, excuse me, that are obscene, pornographic, or that an average reasonable person would find highly offensive to public decency.
You've heard reading by title of item six A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item six A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
Yeah, it's on the question. I'm going to be voting no. And I clearly stated my reasons at past meetings, and my no vote is one of principle. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so move.
Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the committee on public works for adoption, resolution number one twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation policy and procedure for consultant selection form as it relates to working with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to select an appropriate engineer consultant for the multimodal transportation funds grant for the complete replacement of the Ash Street Bridge.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on public works?
As the chairperson for the committee on public works, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B, for consideration by the committee on finance for adoption, resolution number one thirty, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into the revised agreement for collection of delinquent municipal claims on behalf of the city of Scranton with Portnoy Law Associates LTD for collection of delinquent municipal claims.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on finance?
As the chairperson for the committee on finance, I recommend final passage of seven B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I stated it earlier in caucus, I do, I did wish that the administration discussed or at least looked at a period of amnesty. I think it could have been a benefit for the city to get that influx of money before the fifteen percent fee was added to it by this, by Portnoy Associates. But I am happy to see that council's suggestions were added to this agreement, and I think we got a better deal for the city.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Councilman Schuster said. I know he made some recommendations. I'm glad that this was tweaked because look at the last company we had. We keep, everybody keeps forgetting about it. I don't even know if we sever ties. We're told we have. So I'm glad we were able to, you know, tweak this deal for the betterment of our taxpayers.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Just a few things. I will be voting for this. The agreement that was originally sent down, the terms of the agreement were unacceptable on, for several different reasons that we've gone over in detail here. And council performed its role as oversight and to make sure that, you know, the people of the city are getting the best deal, best bang for their buck. And that's what we did. And I want to thank Solicitor Hayes for the work that he put in and all of my fellow council members for their input on this as well. I agree with Councilman Schuster. The idea of a grace period, I've been talking about that now for quite some time. I'm very disappointed. I think we're leaving a lot of money on the table here. A lot of money. And I don't understand it because we are a city that every year is looking at the end of the year at potential deficits. Next year, the budget we received, we're calling for about a four million dollar shortfall potentially. Next year, the budget we received, we're calling for about a $4 million shortfall potentially. The year after that and the year after that. So for us to leave or for the mayor and the administration to leave money on the table potentially, I don't think it's a wise decision. That's all I have. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption. Resolution number 131, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District with Robert Rossi and Company, sometimes referred to as Robert J. Rossi and Company and/or Robert J. Rossi and Company, to perform the Scranton Single Tax Office Independent Audit for fiscal years ending December 31, 2019, and December 31, 2020.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption. Resolution number 132, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a master lease agreement between the city of Scranton, here and after designated lessor, and Selco partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, with its principal offices at One Verizon Way, mail stop 4AW100, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, 07920, Lessee, to lease space to Lessee with respect to particular sites at which Lessee wishes to install, maintain, and operate small cell, excuse me, small cell communications equipment as well as any and all necessary lease supplements outlined herein.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, all business. There's nothing at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Stay safe. See you next week.